Councilmember Noakowski said he wouldn't be able to attend Social Service Finance today. He'll be in the afternoon.
Okay.
Okay, we're live.
Meeting on finance Tuesday, the 30th of June, 2020. Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Wingo?
Present.
Congress President?
Hey, from the top.
Item number one, letter to Controller.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open and I want to thank it first, thank, welcome everyone to our Finance Committee meeting. And as we discuss some of the internal issues regarding our city. Last week regarding item number one, the open letter to Controller from the B F S A Executive Director. Had an opportunity to be on their agenda last week and talk about some of the challenges of the city and asking for their partnership to keep us informed so the council is much better prepared to make decisions. So it was a very good conversation. They made a commitment that they would be a closer partner with us to give us, you know, the insights that we need to make these very tough decisions. As many of you know, our aim money from the state was reduced by 20% as a whole. And they are waiting to see what type of support they'll get from the federal government. I know we've heard over and over again that people are confident we're going to get this money. I'm not as confident and I'll continue to say that because this this president and his poll numbers are in the tank. I don't see him giving us a lifeline so that he can, we can look good and he can look bad. So that's just my opinion. It's been a long haul. I'm hopeful that something will happen possibly. But that's like hoping for the tooth fairy. So again, I think we need to start making strong decisions and hopefully Control Board working with the Controller's Office and administration. We can make some sound decisions and not put all of our eggs in one basket hoping for the tooth fairy to come. The tooth fairy is not going to come, I don't believe. And we need to start making decisions so the city can move forward and not stand still. So that's my point of view. I hope that this relationship with the Control Board will be fruitful to help us make some very sound decisions. We know that we have a very large city staff. And we're trying to make sure that we can continue to deliver service to residents because that's what their expectation is. However, if we don't save the city, we don't save anybody. So we have to make sure that our decisions are prudent. I think one of the things that I've continued to speak to is the lack of revenue that the city is generating and especially in this pandemic, that's going to be reduced and challenged even more. However, there were some positive things that we saw that the sales tax revenue was a little bit higher than we anticipated and hopefully that trend will continue. But that's a hopeful thing and sometimes you really want to make sure that our decisions are based on history and of good, sound information and analysis. So with that being said, Mr. Chair, unless anybody else has something to say, I'd like to table that item and move forward unless anyone else has a comment. Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number two, operating budget 2020 to 2021.
Motion to table.
Motion to table seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number three, revenue deficiency note memo.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open and I believe the Controller's Office is on.
Yeah, yes, Delano Dow, Controller's Office, good afternoon, everyone. As we discussed in a previous probably month or so or few weeks that the city, due to the financial strengths of the city, the city was, did apply for a revenue deficiency note. The resolution was passed by the council. The deficiency note was up to $25 million. Based off our analysis of where the city will finish and also the administration analysis where the city is going to finish, we both kind of agree to like an $18 million shortage. After our analysis, after everything was approved, we, as Councilmember Wyatt, just noted that the state aim payment for June initially was budgeted at 98 million but ended up receiving 78 million. So once we seen the money deposited into the city's account last week, Thursday, that we were short 20 million, that is telling us that our deficit will increase from 38 million, I mean, from 18 million to 38 million. So even when we did that revenue deficiency note for 18 million, the city still would be short $20 million. So with that being said, the Controller and her team said, how can we help absorb this loss of this additional $20 million? So we did our review. And then we did a review and we seen that we still have $7 million remaining in a deficiency note. Because initially the deficiency note was issued, was approved for 25 million. We got a loan from J P Morgan Chase at 18 million. So now what we're looking to do is to use the remaining $7 million to offset the deficit, that $20 million shortfall from the state payment. And then I know one quick thing, I know Councilmember Rivera asks fires a difference in regards to the rates. Initially, J P Morgan gave us a interest rate of 1.22%. Controller had the city financial advisor, go back to the bank, they gave it to us another rate at 1.20. That difference is like savings of like $5,400 for the city of Buffalo.
Any questions? Delano, I just wanted to ask the question because I know that in the fine print, it said that we could borrow up to 25 million, but the actual motion was to borrow 18. How do we get around that when we actually agreed to borrow 18 and not 25?
Well, the resolution stated that borrow up to $25 million.
Okay, so, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the resolution allowed us to borrow up to 25 million, but we had to show, when you do a revenue deficiency, you have to show your true deficiency. At the time that we did analysis, it was 18 million. So both parties in regards, all three parties, let's say, was in agreement with the 18 million, but no one was aware, no one was aware that we was going to get short the aim payment of additional $20 million. So that's why we said, instead of absorbing that entire 20 million, let's offset that with additional 7 million. That take us down to a loss of 13 million.
Okay, so the, so you, so you're going back to them about for the 7 million? Is that going to be tagged on to the 18?
Correct. It will be two separate notes and they both will be due December 31st, 2021.
Okay.
So hopefully, I mean, we'll reach out. The Controller will reach out to by council and to city financial advisor and also J P Morgan Chase.
And Donna, can you speak to the balance of the deficiency? What's being done to address that?
Right now, we are reaching out. We're working with the departments. The year closes today. So we are, we've looked at it and we're thinking it might be just a tad under 18. We're reaching out for all the billings that come in that can be year end. There's adjustments that make it go back into the prior year and make sure all our billings are up to date and that's what we've been working on the last week or so.
Okay, are there any conversations about furloughs or anything like that?
Not at this time. I mean, we've started to look at slowing our hiring perhaps. When people are asking to hire people, we're asking them to present a plan why they need the person. Is there someone else that can do that job? Can you delay it? We're asking those type of questions.
Okay, and I'm not trying to be funny, Donna, but are we seriously looking to still hire people in the midst of this? I just, to me, that's just insulting, to be quite honest. I mean, we are, we are at a point that we don't know which way to turn and we're still talking about hiring people?
Well, some of them are contractual. Some of them are like supervisors out in public works. We have to have a certain number of supervisors, so it's not really a new hire. It's people being promoted into new titles, but it's mostly through contractual agreements.
Well, I know Commissioner Finn talked about the promotional piece, which if that's part of the contract, you know, I guess that's what we have to do. However, you know, the other piece is if we're hiring people outside of that, I'm just shaking my head and trying to understand how we be, how can we even, you know, think about those things when right now, you know, we're at a significant point of peril. And so to add additional people, I mean, I think that, and this is just my opinion, I'm one council member, that we probably should have took a more prudent approach because of the outlook. We don't really know. And this, we were confident or we thought that we're going to get the aim payment, the full amount. But we only got 80% of it. So is there any other things down the road that can impact us as dramatically as this? Because this was a shock to us because we all kind of assumed we're going to get the money.
Right, we assume the aim reduction, if it did come, would come into our fiscal year, next fiscal year. Public Works also needed some assistance. They haven't hired any yet, but they're looking at what their requirements are to be for cleaning through City Hall and all the different buildings that we have. You know, we have to make it safe for everybody. So we had an impact, a purchase of getting ready to open up City Hall. So some of that is hitting this current year too. And much of that will also be, much of that will be reimbursed through our FEMA. We'll get some monies back on that.
So we're, so, so are we doing an evaluation of our, our, our departments? So that we know that if we have to make a decision on some referrals, what areas or what departments can kind of accept those things because it's not going to be a direct impact to the public? Versus, you know, people who may be considered non-essential working in the office?
Non-essential. We have, we've just recently taken all the different departments. I have employees in my office and we've assigned departments to each of these of my budget analysts and the Director of Budget and Fiscal Officer. And so we are working with each, starting to work with each of these departments to look for efficiencies and different ways of doing sort of providing services. So we have started that, looking forward to save some monies.
I know we sent, we were sent an email, I think all the council members received it from Mike Marcy and he talked about the, your approach in his last remark, which I responded to, where he said that we would have to use the rainy day fund for part of the situation because we had no alternative. And I asked him, who says that you didn't have an alternative? I hope that we can take that off the table because I think that to affect our rainy day fund, I hope that the Controller's Office can hold high. That would affect our bond rating, correct?
It could. But we also think that a lot of municipalities is going through what we're going through. I mean, I think we can speak to our variances. And depending on where our rating is at, what determine what it'd be when we go to market in the spring.
Like this is going to be a problem throughout the country right now too. So I'm not sure we'll be hit as hard as you may anticipate. I think our rating will stay pretty strong.
Councilmembers, any questions, any comments? Councilmember Friggin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that we are seeing this across the country. I know that other municipalities are having financial challenges. But I want to be clear, other municipalities are also putting forth a plan. And that plan is not simply borrowing. We are at, at that hour now, I just believe. And whether we want to face that fact, because at the end of the day, this council still has a responsibility regardless of what information and base, not regardless, I shouldn't say that. Based on the information that we have, the only alternative that I have heard is borrowing. We are borrowing to close a budget gap that is going to be payable in the near future. Not five years from now, within the next two years, we've got to pay this money back. I guess I'm, I, I, I don't take the, the answer of, and this is not from Controller, because this isn't the Controller's ball. We're at the hour, I believe, where we have to know what we're getting ready to do. Because as we go into this next fiscal year and July 1st, the memorandum of understanding, I want to, I want to remind, want to remind everybody that memorandum of understanding goes into effect, I think, tomorrow. And we have not received any of the funds of the $65 million. I'm looking within the next week for a plan. Is, is there a plan other than borrowing to close the upcoming gap? Whoever?
Yes, we have put together a plan. It would not cover the full $65 million, so.
When, when would a plan be shared with the council?
Um, I am just finalizing it with the mayor today. So I'm assuming that would be soon.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would say by council meeting Tuesday. This city has to make some really, really tough decisions. And I know I for one, I'm sure the administration and no commissioner or anybody else wants to hear the words layoff. But the county has had to deal with this. The state is having to deal with it. The reason we are receiving our aim payment late. And I'm, as Councilmember Wyatt said, I'm only one council member. But I can tell you, I am not in a hurry to give a vote for another loan. I'm not in a hurry to say, let's go to the rainy day fund. And because that's the only thing we have left, I disagree. This is the time to manage. This is the time to lead. And I don't think it's the time to now wring the sponge dry because we are not making the hard decisions. So I would hope that we, I'm not hoping. We have a memorandum of understanding. I expect that we're going to meet next week. And I expect that there would be a plan of what this city is going to do, just like the county and every other municipality Niagara Falls has had to do. So, and this isn't on you. I know you, your representation, Commissioner. But we do have that memorandum of understanding and it, my understanding is there will be a meeting with leadership next week. Is that your understanding?
I have not been informed of any meetings yet, so I'd be pleased to attend it, but I have not been.
Well, it, it should be, it, it's not just you. It's supposed to be the administration at meeting with council leadership after July 1st, if we did not get the $65 million. And it's obviously, obviously, we have not gotten the $65 million. And what also is obvious is as of this moment, this minute, we don't know the plan except to borrow. And that's all we keep hearing and I, or, or go into the last bit of savings. It's not even savings, the rainy day fund. Is the rainy day fund, according to Mr. Marcy's email, that, that's what's next on the table?
I believe his comment that he sent out was in response to closing out the current fiscal year. Now for going forward. It was if we, if the 25 million, if we did the 18 plus the seven and that was not enough still, then it would go into the assigned fund balance or the rainy day fund.
So if we go into the rainy?
That was to close up the year. That was not anticipated to close out future years.
So that means when we go into next year, do we, is there a plan to pay back that rainy day fund? And I did, leadership did have a meeting with the mayor. I just don't have my notes here right now. The plan to pay back the rainy day fund, what is that?
Well, our budget is obviously approved now for next year. So there was nothing in there to pay back the rainy day fund for the next year. So it would have to be the following year. Start paying.
The following year, we would end up with the, the loan we, we've already approved. Plus trying to put money back in the rainy day fund. And unless, I, I don't know, unless 200,000 more people move into this city. And they, or, I, I, I don't see how we do that. I'm concerned. I'm concerned. And I, I think that we, we have to have now, what's the plan? Because we don't create that plan. But I, I, if, if the plan is, is to, to just keep waiting and hoping that the federal government is going to give us some money that the casino compact, the contract is going to come through. I'm, I'm, I can't, I can't, I can't do that. One council member, I can't do it. I don't think this council should be doing it. I think that we have been patient. I think that we have waited. And now is the hour. I don't know whether we're going to have to do, I don't want to go by resolution. I want to go by solution. And solution should be somebody from the administration saying, on this date, we are going to share with the common council, the city of Buffalo, what the plan is going forward for our finances. Is there any conversation within the administration to release that plan?
I will reach out to when the mayor wants to release it and let you know. I'd be glad to do that.
And, and I, I hate to have this conversation in this forum. But in this forum where you have the Controller's Office kind of ringing the bell in this forum where you have the Control Board ringing the bell, there has to be some movement and there has to be some movement within the next seven days. If not, we, we'll, we'll do a resolution to get that movement and I hope we don't have to do that. I would hope that leadership of, of the administration would say, it's time. We've got to produce a plan. We've got to shore up the city's finances and this is how we're going to do it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify, when Mr. Marcy's comments referred to, as I understood them, he said if we had to the additional amount from AIM, if we didn't get that money and if the state by September did not get the money from the federal government, then he said we had no alternative but to use the rainy day fund. And that's what he referenced it. Okay, it wasn't about the year end. It was about if we didn't get the money back from the state by September and the AIM money, this, the state didn't get any additional money, we would not get that money. So he said or stated, we had no alternative but to use the rainy day fund. And I said to him, we do have a rainy, an alternative. That alternative is to do what we don't want to do and that's cuts, that's layoffs. Right now, if we had to do it before the close of year end, that was one thing because we are, our backs were against the wall. But now we're not even waiting to them. We're going after this year end to take, to deal with the 20, the 18 million that we were shorted or they were held back. So I just want to make sure and I am not in support of that. There are things that we can do right now to begin the process so that we can hopefully reduce the blow of what it may be in September if we're not going to get that money. But for us to sit and stand still and wait for, you know, the tooth fairy to come, I just think that's a bad decision and it's poor management and it puts us all at risk because at some point we got to pull the trigger. And I don't know if the Control Board is in favor. Will, is this plan being shared with the Control Board?
We are putting one together for them also, yes.
Okay, I just want to say again.
Again, the rainy day fund, the comment for Mike Marcy was for year end because the 19.6 was part of 1920 fiscal year. So that's what he's talking about. And then going forward, we had already reduced our state aid in the budget with the assumption it was going to be reduced.
I'm, I'm very hopeful that the respect that we deserve as elected officials is given to us. Because the previous plan that was submitted by the administration regarding this Control Board, they sent to the Control Board but didn't send it to the council members. I don't understand how that is even acceptable, that we are the legislative body that votes on the budget and we are asking the questions and we're used as the third rung and not the second rung because we are a co-equal branch of government. So I hope this plan, once it's shared, it's shared to the Control Board as well as this common council. And it shouldn't be delayed. It shouldn't be, I don't, I don't see that there's an ordinance or anything from the Control Board in their governance that they have to be informed before the common council. I would think it would be the opposite. The common council will refer and then the Core, the Control Board should be copied. But I really hope that as Council President, so eloquently put, that we are in the loop of what's going on because at this point, up to this point, we have not been. And I'm not just saying about the leadership. I think that the council should be brought in just like we were having all the conversations on COVID. We were having conference calls. Well, let us have a conference call. It can be two of us, three of us, but we should all be in the same room of conversation about what's going on because we all have a responsibility as a council members to make certain that we're, we're on the right track to what we need to do in this dire situation. Councilmember Majority Leader Rivera?
Thank you very much, Donna. I just want to go back to the minimum manpower. You said, mentioned something that some of the positions that we're hiring are contractual. Is there a minimum manpower that is contractual in every bargaining agreement?
There is in police, there is in fire and there in parts of public works.
Police, fire.
In the 264 union.
Public works. So the minimum manpower is at the, are they at the level right now, the minimum manpower level?
They are not.
They're not?
The 264 are not right now.
Okay, I agree with, with Council President. You know, we're using, we used our first credit card. Now we're working on our second credit card. At some point, you're going to run out of money. And I think we're long past the time that we needed to discuss this. Unfortunately, we picked July 1st. I would have liked to have done it before we approved the previous contract. We need to start thinking and talking about the contingency plan right now. I don't want to continue to pile up debt because somebody's going to pay off that debt. And we're going to get further in the hole. Every week, every month that goes by, we're further in debt and at some point we have to stop the bleeding. And I think it is now and Council President spoke like if he was the Controller, he brought, he raised the flag as Council President. But also what I want to hear from the Controller's Office. Those are the kind of warnings that I want to hear. So I asked the Controller to please provide us with that. You know, we're talking about going, the bond rating, you say it may stay the same, it may go up. I don't know. In, in previous years, we had the Controller yelling from the top of the hill saying, hey, this is not sustainable. This is not sustainable. I, I don't hear that. I hear it from Council President. And I've sensed it in the urgency of some of the council members and perhaps you are, but I'm not hearing it as loud as perhaps as we should. And you can respond to that and that's fine and perhaps you provide it, but you've had, you have an audience here. And this is the common council and we depend highly on your expertise and the market itself. So please, we need to have this conversation sooner than later. Council President mentioned the MO, the MOU that we agreed to. Plan should be ready to go. I mean, at this point, we should have that plan before us within the next week or so to start talking about this. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Delano.
In response to Councilmember Rivera, the Controller's Office, under the leadership of Controller Mayor Williams, we from day one have shared information with the council, with the public and with the administration. We've worked hand to hand with the administration and we've worked with the B F S A. Prior group could have raised flags and might have hidden agenda. Our group is more speaking the facts and providing detail and sitting down with anybody on this, on this call right now to go over the numbers. What we're, we're discussing now is closing out fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Our group projected a loss, a potential loss of $18 million. There's a number of factors that got us to $18 million. We knew that this New York local finance allowed us to borrow to cover this deficit for fiscal year 2019, 2020. We share the information with you guys daily. Anytime you guys ask us to come on a call, we came on a call. But we're not going to go rah rah rah. We don't have anything to support what we're saying. But we have the data to support fires the 18 million is concerned. The Controller just found out last week, Thursday, in regards to the shortfall to the state aid payment. We was under this consideration that we was going to receive a full of 98. And we got, only got 78. So we said, okay, what can we do for this fiscal year? And I think one of the things we're confusing is trying to close out fiscal year 2019, 2020 and then start fiscal year 2020, 2021. The 65 million that you guys are speaking of, that's part of the budget for next year. We're only concerned right now trying to close out this year, but we know this 20, as you guys are, and you have every right to, is that this 25 million will be doing 18 months. What would administration do? What would the common council do in 18 months or the next couple of years to cover that deficit along with anything, any other shortages that potentially can occur in the next fiscal year? So our group was really looking at what's going on today. And then as we see, provide whatever data, factual information that yourselves need or what the public need to see.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Councilmember Fairlado, the Councilmember Bowman, did you have your hand up? Okay, Councilmember Bowman and then Councilmember Wingo.
Okay, thank you. I just had some follow-up questions for Commissioner Astrid.
Okay, thank you, um, I just had some follow up questions for Commissioner Estrich into what Council President Pridgen was talking about earlier. So the nineteen point, I think, seven approximately twenty million. That the administration plans on using from the rainy day fund, assuming.
No, 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 we're not planning on using nineteen point six million out of the rainy day fund. As Mr. Dowell said, we're closing out the fiscal year. We had anticipated the ninety eight million dollars from the state, we were short of the nineteen point six. So that's why we're increasing the eighteen to twenty five to offset some of that loss. And then to close out the year would be after all the journal entries are done at the end of the year. It would come out of the assigned, I think it's the assigned and then come out of the committed funds and the committed would be the rainy day fund. We're not planning on using that money for the next year budget.
Okay, so for the, my question is. Um, it's my understanding that the state is withholding money, they're not. Reducing the money and the state plans on giving the money back to the city at some point. When that money, assuming that happens, can that money go right back to the fund it was in or? Does, would it go to the general fund? I just want to know more of the specifics on that.
Well, it depends on the timing, once the accounting department closes out the year. It cannot be journal entry back into the nineteen twenty year. If it comes in December, it'll count toward our twenty twenty one budget. It's all on the timing of when it arrives.
Okay, and is there a plan? Is the plan when that does, assuming it does come back from the state and the state does give the money which they say they're going to. Is the plan to keep that in the general fund or is the plan to put that back where it was?
Well, it was part of the general fund. So that would be part of your year end closing as revenue for that year.
Okay, so in it, so in the twenty twenty, I'm sorry, I was trying to. In the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget, with that funding, as if it comes from the state. It would be money from this fiscal year, not next fiscal year, so my question is, if it's from, if it's going. If the city's gonna receive it next fiscal year and it's coming from the rainy day fund. Shouldn't it go back to that instead of the general fund? That's the 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 question that I have.
Well, it would hit, the accounting department would have to close out the year to balance the budget. So if we needed it to close out the budget, it would not yet fall to the rainy day fund. If we didn't need it to close out the budget, it would fall to the rainy day fund.
Okay, so in the next, next June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. This, the rainy, the funds. Right now could be used to close out next year's budget, that's sort of what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, yes, it could, if it does not come in by September, if it comes in early enough, they can use it for the nineteen twenty budget. If not, it would count toward the night, the twenty twenty one budget.
Okay.
That year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And and Councilmember, I don't, and and Donna can correct me, I don't believe unless we, if the if the federal government doesn't give the state money. We're not gonna get the twenty million, is that correct, the money back from the state, Donna?
Um, that was kind of their indication, I have not gotten a direct um. Correspondence from them to indicate that yet, that they would not pay it.
Okay, um, Mr. Dow.
Now, I think just real quick, just for a little clarification, is that uh, the city closes fiscal year uh today on June thirtieth. We have sixty days to post entries in in June thirtieth. So what we're saying is if if the state was to release that twenty million shortage to the city, that twenty million will post in fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But if they, if we receive them that money um October first, that money will post, that twenty million will post in fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. We will only have to use uh the fund balance, I mean, the rainy day fund. If we don't, if we don't have enough to cover the shortage, whereas say for example, right now, what we're saying is that. We have a budget shortfall of twenty million dollars. Now, then we're saying, okay, we're gonna borrow seven million, so that take uh twenty minus seven, that gives you thirteen million dollars. So now on the thirteen million, we go to the next level in a fund balance, which will be the uh. Uh, on the sign, we have zero dollars are on the sign, then the next level above there is our assigned dollars. We have thirteen million dollars in our assigned fund line, so then that thirteen million shortage will offset against that thirteen. Then we won't have to touch the rainy day fund this fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But if it's higher than twenty million dollars and when it got thirteen in our sign, let's say for example, is twenty two million. Then thirteen will post to assigned fund balance, the remaining two will chop into that rainy day fund balance. So it's different levels to the general fund, but we will attack the assigned fund balance before we attack the rainy day fund balance.
Thank you.
Despite, and like I said, this is all based off this current fiscal year we're in now, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Next year is a whole other animal and I understand what you guys are saying, we will monitor it, you guys will monitor it, administration is doing what they're doing. And the B F S, B F S A will also look at it also.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Bowman.
Yeah, I think my line of more along the lines of Councilmember Farilal. More, what I was concerned with is if we were into the rainy day and thank you, Delano, for clearing that up, we still do have the assigned funds of thirteen million that could clear this up. But what I was hearing rainy day, I'm thinking that like sixty day, you know, thirty five million or whatever it is, the sixty day city expenses. So what I was trying to understand, if we did take. Money out of the rainy day fund to fill that gap, would we say the money held from the state withheld? When that comes back in and we finish the fund, but I I understand further. And then another comment I have on uh hiring, I understand the nuances of the contractual stuff. But my position would be basically moving forward right now, we should really freeze hiring unless it's a revenue generating position, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Wingo.
I'll pass, I'm I'm pretty sure the, I I said I'll pass, I'm gonna pass. I'm not getting involved with this crazy conversation.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, next item. Motion to table.
Item number four, May twenty twenty cash flow report.
This item is open.
I mean, we we spoke on this uh numerous times in regards to where the city uh cash was at as of uh May thirty first. Uh, we continue to provide data or answer whatever questions you guys may have in regards to the cash flow report. And like we said, for the most part, it's just tracking uh the cash receipts and the cash dispersments the city actually received. Uh, from uh to begin of fiscal year till uh May thirty first, twenty twenty.
Um, is there any way we can get this information sooner or are you giving it to us as soon as you can get it to us?
As soon as we, because it's a reconciliation, it it's a process, we want to make sure we get all our receipts and disbursements in. Uh, in a correct month, so our group, uh Greg Semensky, he's he's on the line uh right now, but. It's a process and we push him, the controller push him to get it out because we know this is a hot topic, uh and his group is doing their best. Uh, to get the information out quick to us so we can review it and then I'll follow with you guys.
I I had a question for Greg regarding the borrowing. Um, we borrow our maximum amount, which I believe you all said was five percent of our budgeted amount. Do we still have that same opportunity in the budget year twenty twenty one to borrow additional monies?
Uh, yes, that's correct, you have, you can do it for two. Two years, um, at five percent, that's my understanding of it. Um, if you do it two two consecutive years, they would, I I believe there would be oversight by the state controller's office. Um, if we needed to do it for the second year, like additional reporting requirements. But I'm not sure what those would be.
Okay. Thank you, any other com- questions? Okay, motion to table.
Item number five, controller response to B F S A email dated six sixteen twenty twenty.
This um, this was a response from the controller in regards to the rate that the um revenue deficiency rate. That the B F S A would be able to receive compared to the city of Buffalo, but as we stated, uh due to the kind time constraints. Uh, there wasn't really too much time for us uh to reach out to other men's uh other banks. And the B F S A, nor did they offer uh support prior on behalf of City of Buffalo. Like I stated, um, I know Councilmember Rivera asked the difference in rates. Uh, with the controller's direction, we were able to um. Reach back out to the bank and get at least a point oh two adjustment to the original uh interest rate they gave us, savings of fifty four hundred dollars uh to the city, so. It's good that she pushed for that and also you guys are pushing for that, seeing if we can get the rate even lower, because. From my point of view, I was happy with the one point two two, um, but we did go back and was able to get it at um one point two.
All right, so your process, when you go out to the market regarding um borrowing, i- is it more than just J P Morgan that you go to uh solicit?
Uh, Greg can speak to it, but yes.
Yeah, I mean, normally when we go to uh, you know, we. Like to do uh competitive deals which go out to the market in general, but since of the short timeframe. Um, our financial advisor had reached out to, you know, a couple of banks and. And um, you know, J P Morgan, in his estimation, gave us a tremendous rate. Based on, um, I know last time that we submitted um. Some comparables of of other deals and our rate was lower and longer term. Um, than some of those other deals, so we felt pretty confident in the rate we got.
Okay, um, but go ahead, go ahead, Greg.
Um, yeah, but normally when we, when we do the the competitive um deals that goes out to the market in general. And we did save some other costs, um, you know, we didn't have to do uh a rating which cost money. Um, any of the printing stuff, so we really kind of save some money on the cost of issuance side, doing it. This way.
Okay, there are typically, is it J P Morgan Chase that we do our bonding with, because it seems like that's, that's where we typically go.
Um, no, when they're competitive, it just gets whoever is the winning bidder is is um. Wins the, you know, is the is selected. Um, in this case, J P Morgan is one of our major banks and they're one of the uh largest banks in the world, so. You know, they have the capacity to do these things quickly and um to get them done.
And is, most of our deposits are with J P Morgan, correct?
Um, J P Morgan holds our um, our capital funds and we do. Um, put some of our general funds over there in a um, in a money market account. As um, but most of the general fund receipts come in and the disbursements come out of KeyBank.
And is is that something that weighs into the rate, because I know typically, a lot of times if you have. A certain amount with a particular institution that there are some discounts that you can get on borrowing, is that something that weighs into that or no?
Um, definitely the relationship between us and J P Morgan to help the situation, there's no doubt in my mind about it. Um, because, you know, we do, you know, we've had a relationship with them for a while and, you know, that definitely helps.
Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, motion to table.
Motion to table.
They're gonna buy Councilmember.
Item number six, full response, council concerns regarding projected budget shortfall.
Items open.
Uh, we filed this a while back, um, initially, I think we was projecting a shortage of, I want to say twenty four million. Um, when we submitted the third quarter G A report, we did a reanalysis, maybe. A couple of weeks later, I think we had eleven. Uh, eleven months worth of true actual data and then we changed our analysis and I think the bulk of. Our um, reduction and projected loss at that time that this was filed was due to receive more sales tax than anticipated. And I believe our parking fund came was coming in lower uh than what we anticipated, so the net was almost like a six million dollar of variance. Like I said, that was at that point in time that when we filed this uh. I think like in in May or somewhere around there. And that's just more uh something where uh the controller felt uh letting you guys know, because initially in her her third quarter G A response, she projected eighteen million. And when we did reanalysis, she felt the need uh to share the information with you guys and that's why this uh uh letter. Was submitted to you to let you know we were changing um our projection at at that point in time.
Um, any other questions, comments? Okay, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number seven, controller requests to renegotiate bond interest rate.
We, and I might, I might have jumped the gun on that because we we just discussed that.
We can table, motion to table. Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number eight, fire department wireless device utilization.
Items so.
This item right here, uh, we do annual audits, we do have uh the city auditor Kevin Kaufman is on the line, he can go more detail. Well, I think we we also discussed this item also in regards to. Uh, his group did an audit on wireless devices uh that were assigned to uh the fire department. Um, we found out that all the devices weren't being used, uh potential savings, uh. I think either four, six K, somewhere around there, uh even before we was able to file um this item, the fire fire department, they reassess. Uh, the uses of other wireless utilization, utilize that devices and they cut, I want to say five or six back. And this might have been the first time that um Kevin and his team did an audit where we had a department. Uh, take us up on what we suggested prior to us filing uh the audit uh with. Uh, the common council, so we do thank the fire department uh for um taking um. Kevin's and his team to audit considerate into consideration is their findings.
And I believe the commissioner wants to speak on this item.
Uh, yes, uh, hello, once again, everyone, uh, yes, we want to, definitely want to do our part and uh especially in this uh. Fiscal times, it's farst fiscal times, I should say, uh, so yeah, we're looking at every dollar, we're doing a top to bottom review of all our uh. Wireless devices as well as even uh take home vehicles and over time across the board to make sure we're doing our part, so. Yes, and uh there are some other uh devices that we also, we're looking at uh deactivating as well to add to those savings, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, motion, Kevin, you didn't need to say something?
I just want to say we're really happy with the fire department for implementing the recommendations even before we could get the report out, so that doesn't usually happen. And we're very excited about that. You know, they did everything we asked and extremely timely.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner, thank you for your team, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Commissioner, you mentioned savings, but you also mentioned take home vehicles. Um, is that something you're, an area you're looking to cut in?
Uh, yes, it is constantly, we we, every every couple of months, we want to take a fresh look at that, make sure. Uh, we have the right amount of people taking home the cars as far as a supervisor, as a supervisory level, at least, make sure that doesn't get away from us, so. We do a annual, not annual, we do a review every couple of months to make sure that uh we're in line with that.
Okay, I know the police department, it's contractual, they can take, once they have a benefit, it's hard to take away from them. I- is this contractual or no?
No, it's not contractual at all, we just look at who to respond, when they need to respond and whether they in fact need a vehicle or not.
Okay, so you assign, take, uh, so then who makes determination who takes home uh vehicles?
Uh, that's between myself and the staff, we'll take a, we'll take a look at the entire list, uh, all our departments. We think these, I mean, in some cases, uh, there are some vehicles that are used for internet round, like our inspection unit, uh, out of fire prevention. Uh, some of our fire investigation units, things like that, so, but we'll do a top line, like I said, and we'll review it with my staff and and make our decisions accordingly.
You know, I, this is one area that uh certainly support. Uh, the administration on is people that are taking home vehicles out to the suburbs. Um, and they're not responding to emergency calls, they're administrators. I can understand and perhaps uh somebody that has to respond quickly to a fire or a scene. Um, but to issue take home vehicles, the amount of money it costs to maintain that fleet. Um, is astronomical and I'm hoping that we look at these take home vehicles. Not just in your department, but in other departments as well, thank you.
Of course, you're welcome, thank you.
Um, on that note, Commissioner Estrich, have the city ever done an efficiency study? Over department? For any department? Have we done anything within the city as far as efficiency?
Um, we did it years ago and that's kind of what we're starting now, what I mentioned before. How we're breaking the city into, or the departments through my department. We have three or four departments per person to look at that. See how they're, just what you're talking about. Why are they having take home cars? Do they need take home cars? Do we need cell phones? Do we need, you know, things we pay for that kind of become day to day that maybe shouldn't be?
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, motion to table.
To the table.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number nine, annual audit plan for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Items open?
And this item is open? Controller's office?
Um, sorry, uh, let me do, uh, Kevin, can you give them a high level overview of annual audit, audit plan?
Yep. Uh, so each year we're required to file with the council before the end of the year. Annual audit plan that documents what we did in the prior year and what we're going to do in the next year. You know, so we, we perform a risk analysis, you know, based on our financial risk, which would be the department's revenue and expenses. And the, which the department's risk something occurring that will go undiscovered by the system of controls. Um, we evaluate those two risk factors and determine what departments are the overall highest risk. Then we use that to plan how we're going to audit in the next year. The departments that are the highest risk, we spend the most time auditing. The ones that are lower risk, we don't allocate as many resources to audit those departments. You know, they might not get an audit every year. It might be every third or fifth year. Whereas, you know, some of the higher risk departments, it's going to be every year, every other. And then also as part of this annual audit plan, we list a summary of all the completed audits. But we've all, we've discussed every audit we file at the finance committee meeting, so I don't know if we need to go through that again.
What, 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 what determines the risk?
So it's, there's a financial risk component, so it's your total revenue and expenses for the department. So, you know, police and fire would be the highest financial risks. And then control risk, which would be the internal controls, whether they are proper and adequate, which we evaluate through performing other audits, we know the results of from those departments and internal control questionnaires that we sent out.
Okay, okay, any, any questions, colleagues? Okay, thank you for the information. Uh, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Item number ten, audit on the street lighting system in the city.
Items open?
This item is open and, um, I believe we have Commissioner Finn on. Thanks, Commissioner. Can you, you, you give us an update? I know it's been some time since we got an update on this and I know the city is looking at some transitional opportunities as well.
Yeah, the, um, the audit that this item refers to was taken up by the controller's office. Uh, this, this goes back to, I, I think the original resolution that was, uh, tied to this item was from two thousand thirteen. Uh, and it referred, it asked the controller's office to do a, an audit of the streetlight system. They did that. Um, I, I'm not positive on, on the status of it a- as of this time, uh, but I, I wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, controller's office?
Mr. Kaufman?
Okay, I can speak on that. So this audit is still ongoing. It started in two thousand thirteen. And two thousand and sixteen, we came to an agreement where National Grid gave us a million dollars based on amounts they, and they billed us in excess. Um, we're trying to negotiate the final resolution of the audit to finally get this over with. But at this point, I can't give you an estimated timeframe.
Okay, well, we wish you could because we could use the money. So you, so you, you can't give us any, I mean, you're thinking this may be next year, five months? Nothing you can tell us on this one? Because it's been out there for a while. Hello?
I think his, uh, computer is freezing because.
Well, I, I think basically my conversation with Kevin where we had the third party auditor come in is kind of still in National Grid hands to say yea or nay, uh, to, uh, the findings. So we kind of like waiting to hear back from now.
Okay.
But, uh, we couldn't have, uh, Kevin, uh, follow up with, um, the auditors to see if they can reach out to National Grid.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, since of our, since our financial issue, if we can stay on top of this um, and shake as many bushes as we can, because, um, this has been, number one has been outstanding for a while. I, I didn't think it was going to take four years for us to get, to get this back. Um, but we need to put pressure on them to get us our money. It's owed to us, it's supposed owed to the residents of City of Buffalo. And do we get interest back on this as well?
That I'm not a hundred percent sure of. I think it's just an overall repayment amount, but they have to agree, uh, to pay, uh, that overpayment amount.
Okay, so we're. So, so we're going to keep this on the table. If you, if you'll let us know, I mean, if you're going to send out a correspondence, please copy us on it so that we can stay abreast. I, I appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you. Motion to table.
Uh, Wingo had his hands up. I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Uh, no, that, no, that's, that's fine. He already asked a question. It was answered. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rivera?
And the interest, um, there's no incentive for them to negotiate or if there's no interest or nothing is being added to or compounded. Uh, can you find out whether or not, if we do move forward on this, if they have to pay interest on that?
Will do.
Okay.
Well, um, like I said, it might be a compound payment where it's interest and what's owed together. If not, uh, we'll ask for allocation and we'll provide the information to you guys. We will follow up on this.
Thank you. Motion to table?
Motion table. Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number eleven, January twenty twenty summary cash flow report.
Items open?
Um, we can table that. Motion to table.
Time, can, can I make one suggestion? Is that these cash flow reports, uh, we file these every month. So I, I would feel, uh, that the most current report should be the report that you guys keep. And any prior month line should be, I'm not telling you what to do, but receive a file. Because the, the numbers are what they are. Once we say they're actual, they're actual. And any projected ones will be in the following months, but when we see something like this, January on here, it's more, we still have May. And then we're getting ready to get June to you guys, uh, probably the, the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. We'll take that in an under advisement. Any, any comments, any questions?
No questions. Motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned. Seconded by Councilmember Pridgen.